...have played out pretty well, because I'm most of the way at home, so thank you very much.
Can we take you off the pro list?
Yeah. Okay, roll call. Wayne Adams.
Yeah.
Joanna Blanchard. Bill Buell.
Here.
Emily Dwyer. Dick Hodges.
Here.
Andy Murphy. Lisa O'Connor. Chris Redding. Deanna Trotta.
Yes, here.
We got it. All right, pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the people who wish to stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, today's agenda. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Oh, wait, okay. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? We're good? Okay, new business. We're interviewing assistant superintendents today. Jeff, maybe helpful if you just talked a little bit about the process.
Yeah, sure. So as you know, we had quite a good response, about 35 applicants in all. We extended an invitation to eight applicants to come in for an interview. All eight agreed, and seven came in. One received a job, you know, prior to us interviewing. And so we interviewed seven candidates. I want to thank the members of the committee who participated in that. We also had a school administrator, Ken Kelly, and we had a teacher participate. And I think we did a pretty thorough job. Everybody had about 40, 45 minutes, I think, from what I recall, you know, for an interview, went into some depth. At the end of the day, there were four candidates who really rose to the top. So about half of our candidates, you know, really demonstrated something a little bit different than the rest. And after deliberation, we settled on three candidates to bring forward tonight. And although this is, you know, technically my recommendation to you, I like to get your feedback about candidates. So this will be a helpful meeting for me to get feedback from you. So you can, I would encourage you to email me your feedback, give me a call on my cellphone. You know, I'll be at Thalmith after tonight. Text me if it's not too long. And that will be really helpful. Having everybody give me through their lens what they're thinking about. How does the person interact? You know, how would they interact with parents, with teachers, with administrators, you know, with you all? That'll be helpful in bringing forward the right person, you know, for the next step, where you all will actually get to vote. I have to say that the pool of candidates was strong, but any of these three that come forward, I think our group, our committee that interviewed, would say to you that any of them could take on the position. They all have their particular strengths, so it's not that it's a duplication and you just shuffle through. Listen carefully, you know, to them about what they have to offer. I provided to you a little synopsis about each of them, and I've tried to follow the same format. So you're not going to get me to tip any, like, there's no favoritism here on my part. I followed the same format pretty much for everybody. And it gives you a little bit of a difference between them, some subtleties. And, you know, I think you'll see that we have top-quality people coming through. They all expressed interest in Penn Tucket for the reasons that we like to hear. So innovation schools is right at the top of the list. That Penn Tucket has set itself apart and is kind of traveling down a pretty unique road educationally. And they like what they see and they want to contribute. So I don't know if anybody, you know, Bill or Chris, if you want to say anything, you know, beyond that about what you saw in the interviews, or...
I think one thing that stood out was they were very, they were all very consistently impressed with the innovation school and the philosophy of the central office that's running the district right now. And that was, they were all very impressive.
Yeah.
We were very lucky to have such a good pool.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Especially this time of year, so...
Yeah.
And I think to add on to that, what I found throughout the interviews is that they were specifically interested in Penn Tucket for Penn Tucket, not to move into the central office. Not to, like, they all seemed to really not just do their background research, but that was a big thing that abhorred them to come to.
Yeah.
To Penn Tucket is what is happening, the growth of our district with some of the curriculum changes and things like that. So, so to me, that differentiated, especially these three candidates, from...
Yeah, I think they all had that flavor, but these three candidates in particular, I think, are very strong. So I've done background checks, I've talked with their references, you know. I've communicated with them individually a little bit. And so now, with your feedback, I think I'll be able to bring forward a candidate that, you know, we should all be able to work with and bring us to that next step. So they're going to be arriving 15 minutes early. They'll go to the front door, and then after the interview, I'll have the candidate who just spoke to us leave out through the side so that they don't have to meet and, you know, interact with each other. So I know Brent is ready to go. I don't know the time, though, indeed.
It is.
Five twenty-two.
Five twenty-two.
Yeah, so you may want to just take a few minutes.
Everybody.
What's that?
Would it be better if we, these, Wayne and Joanna could split off to the corners a little bit? Would you have a better view of us?
Is that okay?
Maybe if we, you know, we slide, we slide just a little bit.
A clear shot.
Are you getting a better shot?
Yes.
Good.
Okay. So you may want to take just a few minutes before we start. You can read through, you know, each person's little synopsis and get an idea for what you're going to see.
I have long lines, so I'm going to put my knees on that turn.
Okay. Let's start the machinery.
Okay.
They have a problem, though.
Actually, there was a nice, there's a new lady in there. She's a black lady, I forget her name, so she came, she said, I walked into the car. She walked, she walked along with it.
Right. Do a little, you know, welcome and have everybody just introduce.
Sure. We'll do an intro for each of our candidates.
Timing was better than I thought.
We'll intro ourselves.
Yeah.
I'm going to have to set my hair tonight. Now I got a temp. How do we want to introduce ourselves?
I was born in Connecticut.
Born on a laptop, Tennessee. I played a little basketball.
Only been arrested once.
I just took my picture down from my post office.
Hi, Brent. Have a seat right here. Sure.
Hi, Brent, I'm Andy Murphy. I'm the chairman of the school committee. And since we've all read your bio, so that's not really fair that we know all about you and you know anything about us. So I figured we'd go around and do a little intro here, just so you know who's who. We start with Chris.
And we met before your interview. Chris Redding from West Newbury, I'm a school committee member, and I have three children in the district.
Dick Hodges, I'm representing Quelton.
I'm Deanna Trotta. I represent West Newbury. I have one daughter in the school district.
Welcome back. I'm Bill Buell. I interviewed you before. I'm a retired teacher here at Penn Tucket, and I'm representing Merrimack.
And I'm Joanna Blanchard. I'm another Merrimack rep.
Wayne Adams.
Greg LeBracken, business manager.
Mary Ann Maffa.
And I neglected to say, I'm from West Newbury. It's Andy Murphy.
Thank you.
So thanks for coming in, Brent, to meet with us. And there are three questions tonight. You have about a half hour to respond. And you know that the first question is about a 10-minute presentation. And what we're interested in hearing is about your initial thoughts about target areas for an entry plan. So the rest is free?
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate the opportunity to meet with everyone and speak with you tonight, answer questions. Knowing that was the question, I did prepare sort of a draft of what something might look like. Yep. Thank you. And I use the word "draft," very much so, based on, you know, information of my own research, heard from the interview and the questions that were asked, and seeing that the work that has been done already here in the district. So in the approach of sort of looking at what an entry plan would be, I certainly don't think it would be my role to reinvent the wheel. There's been a significant amount of work done here in the district in the last four or five years. And I crafted a draft of an entry plan that worked from the vision that exists for the school district, using sort of the theory of action that has certainly been crafted here, and then with your five strategic objectives. And then setting up a structure with that of what would be my actions in relation to those strategic objectives. And it's a role as assistant superintendent to support the work that's been done and help lead the future work. So using sort of a three-pronged approach to it, thinking about listening, learning, and leading. And taking that approach within each of those objectives. So you see, that's what I sort of outlined for you here, goes onto the back page, and then gives sort of a brief timeline of maybe the first 100 days of what maybe more precise actions, more specific actions, might look like that would relate to these. And I think, you know, when I see the work that's been done here, and this was one of my questions for the interview committee, and sort of the work that I've been researching about Penn Tucket, and sort of the transition to become a innovative school district, not even an innovative school, but an innovative district. How far had that work really gone? Is it, was it sort of an outline? Was it a vision of where we wanted things to go? Or is it work that really is beginning to take hold and showing its roots in the schools? And certainly as evidence that I've seen it is, the quantity of work that's been done. I was sort of amazed, who has done all this work without an assistant superintendent in a district this size? And it's been, that was remarkable to see, the amount of work that's been done. The documents that were shared as well, particularly around curriculum, the renewal cycle, and the work that's been done to establish what some baseline criteria would be at each grade level, in each classroom, in each content grade. So in looking at that, developing and looking into what a entry plan would be as the assistant superintendent, it's really to support that work that's been done. Particularly looking at objective one, thinking about building relationships for sure. And when I say building relationships, it's with central office staff, it's with building-based leadership, teaching staff, support staff, and the community members in all three of the school communities. Not just parents, community members extending beyond that. Building relationships, and then collaboratively working with everyone to advance all that work ahead, really outlined by the strategic objectives that are there. Likely focusing a lot on teaching, learning, and assessment. That is a traditional component, reading the job description. That is a major component for the assistant superintendent. And to do that, focusing on, as I said, listening, learning, and leading. So I think there's a lot of things I looked at, and I think listening was an important component because you really had to hear from the folks about the work that's been done, which included from the, from the teachers, the district administration, really getting a solid understanding of the work that's been done and where people would like the things to continue to go, and what the next steps were, and how, as the assistant superintendent, I can be supportive of that. You can't walk into a role as assistant superintendent going, "This is the way you have to do it." That's not going to work in this school district. There's been too much work that's been done here. It's not a district that's in crisis. It's a district that's been moving forward with a lot of momentum. And to capture that momentum, to understand it, and to support people in their work ahead. At the same time, learning from myself, beyond just listening, learning about the work, but then what are the other tools that we might be able to bring in and now add? And then thinking about leading, how do we take that and lead it in a school district? It's not a sole person's job to do. You need to be able to collaborate with the staff to get them on board to move things forward. So I outlined a few of those things in there. I'm sure you don't want to go bullet point by bullet point.
Maybe, maybe just highlight a couple of...
Couple of highlights, sure.
Yeah, a couple of highlights.
Things certainly in the beginning, if you think about an entry plan, some opportunities, both formal and informal, to meet with stakeholders here in the district. Talk about August and September, arranging to meet with the building principals, district leadership, and teaching staff as well. Making frequent site visits as we move into September and October, going to schools, seeing teaching, seeing learning, talking to staff about it, and really getting an understanding of what their understanding is of all the work that's been done. I think that's, that's really critical. Before you think about what's next, you have to know where, where is everything at? And how, how consistent is everyone's understanding of the various elements that's been done? Is there consistency, or is that the starting point, moving forward? Building consistency so that we can advance the teaching. So, and then from there, a lot of informal opportunities, too. Attending school, back-to-school nights, being a presence, introducing myself to community members, attending community events in the fall in all three different communities, so people become familiar with me. But certainly also working with Dr. Mulqueen about where are the best opportunities for me to get to meet people, know people, and understand what their hopes for, for their children are here in the district? Some of the other things we talked about, I think certainly moving into stage two or phase two of the curriculum renewal plan that has a strong focus on instructional practices, instructional routines, and then actual materials that support that, both for tier-one instruction and then tier-two and tier-three for students who need a little more intensive support. Something that came out in sort of looking at things and that the next step to build on that would be looking at universal, the framework for UDL, Universal Design for Learning, as a core foundation for the staff in all buildings at all levels, pre-K to 12, to understand how to plan and think about access for all students. That is not a special education framework, it's a framework for all students. And I think it matches very nicely with the work that's been done, particularly around sort of competency and mastery, the habits, the adaptive leadership rubric. It really builds off of that, and if we give them a foundation. I know the district has done some initial work on that, but it sounds as though that's something that would be really critical to move in, in the first year, to help people really understand that. So I think there's, the UDL would be a big component of that. Certainly my experience at both elementary and secondary level, an opportunity to support building leadership at all different levels. You have a secondary campus here, and I know you're working on a building project as well, but a secondary campus here, I'm a principal of an element of a middle school that is part of a secondary campus. So we run the same schedule as the high school, which is next door to us. So we share a lot of resources. That did not exist when I started. We, I worked with the high school administration to build that as a secondary campus, to really extend the opportunities for students in both buildings. And we've been able to do that, so that I would be able to be a resource for folks in the beginning and transitioning, and to help people that way.
Great.
Thank you.
So the first question we have is around the curriculum component of the work for the assistant superintendent. And we provided, I provided that document to you. And what we're wondering about is what questions come to mind to you about the curriculum, the Penn Tucket curriculum? And how would your leadership particularly support that implementation?
And that, that product looks like that's a product of the work that was done in phase one of the curriculum renewal cycle.
Exactly, yeah.
And I guess some of my questions are the curriculum renewal cycle. Well, the staff is probably, has become familiar with the work, the product of that. How many are familiar with the four cycles and what to expect of each? It sounds like it's a newer process for everyone. So that would take some work. I think one of the things we get away from sometimes in administration is we forget to explain to everyone the why. We give them the to-do, we give them, "This is the product, this is what we need to do." We forget to tell them the why, and that often is where the buy-in comes. That's where the collaborative effort comes, and that's where people start to generate their own ideas and momentum about where to take things. That may be different, and at some point stronger and more supportive than something that I've done. So I think that would be critical to do in the beginning, is make sure that all staff at all levels understood the process and the why. It's a comprehensive document, certainly when you look at it district-wide. It sounds as though everyone had a hand in it. I guess I'm, I'm very curious of where the time came from to have everyone take part in that. Because it doesn't look like things were done for anyone. It looks like everyone who teaches was involved in that process.
Yeah, everybody had an opportunity.
Yep.
And a lot of the time came from after-school time, actually. So principals and teachers were meeting after hours to get a lot of that done.
Yeah.
So what other questions come to mind?
When you look at, particularly in the next phase, matching the outcomes, which is what that, the document from phase one really was, to instructional practices. What are people's understanding of what best practices are? Are there core practices in place by department, by level? Is there, if I walked into a third-grade classroom during reading instruction at one of the schools, at the school Merrimack, and then I walked into the one in West Newbury, could I expect to see the same type of instruction? Or are there varied expectations around what are those core instructional practices? Those are questions I'd want to ask. What would be the common things that I could expect? And then what are the common things that we want to be able to expect? And yet, we don't want to, we don't want to dictate that everyone in every classroom needs to be doing the exact same thing at the exact same time. That's not what we're dictating. What we're talking about is using the outcomes that are common, and then having discussions with folks around what are the instructional practices that we know lead to these outcomes? What are best practices that lead to these outcomes? And as an innovative school district, you have to allow for some variability in instructional practice. But as an innovative school district, you also then have to have structures in place to learn from each other as adults. If we're going to be innovative from an instructional standpoint, we need to have opportunities that if there is a good practice that's occurring in West Newbury, and the folks in Merrimack need to be able to learn what that practice is, what do those structures look like? What could they look like moving ahead, and what opportunities lie ahead? I see, I see Penn Tucket in particular really leading the way from, from a district perspective to taking on the innovative approaches to instruction. For, you can see pathways created at the secondary level and the focus on the STEM and the, the backglow of IP schools. Can, can Penn Tucket become a professional development hub for other districts who are doing other innovative work, just maybe not in totality in the manner that Penn Tucket has taken the approach? So I think there's opportunity there. So at the same time, we're learning from each other within the district. We're allowing, we're bringing some other folks in to learn from us and from us to learn from them, partnering with them.
So how about your leadership? The second part of this is about, so what will you do? How can you help us to address some of these questions?
Sure. So I think in the beginning, as part of an entry plan, it's sort of, let me go and see, what do I see from an instructional standpoint? Do some of those instructional rounds, walkthroughs, observations, not observations from an evaluative standpoint.
Correct.
With some district leadership at first, are we seeing the same thing? Do you see what I see? What, what are your expectations? So if this has been the professional development for two years, is that what we see on a regular basis? Let's go see that. Let's take leadership, be it district leadership or building leadership, and visit some of the elementary schools in particular, and then at the secondary level as well. And I think at some point, maybe formalizing a protocol or a process for us to do learning walkthroughs to that extent, training, building leadership with that. But in order for learning walkthroughs to really have some, some meaning, you need to involve teaching staff. So maybe looking and developing some ideas around training teaching staff to join building leadership in learning walkthroughs. We've done that in Melrose for a number of years. I've done it both at the elementary and the secondary level.
And we're doing that here, so that would be helpful.
That's great. So leveraging those. And talking about having a focus of inquiry when you, when you do those, and leveraging those for the leadership and leading that. I think the other side of it, from a leadership perspective, is talking about the professional development and leading the professional development around instructional practices. It sounds as though people are very willing and interested to spend time after school doing work and learning. And, and we can have our own staff. It could be myself, it could be building leadership, it could be our own teaching staff, leading professional development as well. But focusing on some of those core instructional practices. The state has given us some pretty good documents and guidelines to work from. Again, they're not prescriptive, but they are, they are supportive. It's a framework. The Inclusive Practices Framework from the state is a tremendous tool for teachers to think about their own instructional practices. Writing goals in particular, using the Inclusive Practices resources. It's one of the best resources, actually, it's come from the state that I've seen. And we use that extensively in Melrose, and I think we do, and the teachers use it, too.
Okay, great. Thanks very much. So the last question we have for you is about our innovation schools. And as you mentioned, innovation schools are a key component to our work here in Penn Tucket. It's a part of our identity. How would your leadership support our innovation schools?
And certainly I've talked about that. That's, I think, it is something that has drawn me here to apply for this position and express interest in coming here. I think my leadership, my experience, number one, has been, you know, over the last two years, we've been working in Melrose with the Great Schools Partnership through a... years, we've been working in Melrose with the Great Schools Partnership through a $500,000 grant from the Bar Foundation to explore competency-based education. COMPAS CBE, it has many names. There are school districts that think of it as proficiency-based, mastery-based. There's actually a Mastery Transcript Consortium of private and public schools that, that participate in that work. So, we've done a lot of work in Melrose over the last two years to really identify habits of knowledge, habits of mind, or habits of learning. And that's work you've already done here, too. What's next and an outcome of the curriculum process in terms of innovation is also having a standards-based reporting process, having those report cards that align to that. Again, I, I think the important distinction, and this goes to the why, and it goes to the opportunities to have good communication with staff, that when we talk about building some common components, whether it be instructional practices, whether it be standards-based reporting opportunities, we are not talking about taking away teacher autonomy and teacher ability to be innovative, creative, and do what students need to have personalized learning opportunities. If anything, we're simply establishing a framework to anchor their work in. And it allows teachers that opportunity to do that. So, I think my mindset alone around it would be highly supportive of teachers continuing to do that innovative work. Again, helping people to understand from a systems perspective that we can take different approaches, we can use different tools and provide kids with different opportunities, so long as we're outcome-focused and so long as what we're doing is not harmful or hurtful and if anything, is working towards getting to, getting to the point where all students are participating. There are, I've had an opportunity in our work over the last two years to make site visits to multiple school districts around New England that are doing innovative work. They don't call themselves innovative schools, but there are districts and schools and sometimes just staff members doing innovative work. And I think making the connections for Penn Tucket with a lot of that innovative work would be something that I could certainly help lead as well. I've seen some great work from our staff in Melrose, particularly at the middle school just in the last few years, of how they have adapted to using Google Classroom very quickly. Their creation of Google Sites for their own professional development and sharing amongst each other. That type of work from a professional standpoint. And then also from a student standpoint. We had opportunity with seventh grade history this, this year. We run three different teachers, so we run 12 sections of it. Ancient history, one teacher wanted to do the Big History Project, which is an online-based, year-long curriculum that does teach the same components. And our other two teachers continued with our traditional method that we were using. Absolutely, that was an innovative method. Show me what the outcomes are, let's have discussion around that. What is, what are the instructional practices? It's going to leverage technology for greater access for all students. Is it inclusive? Absolutely. So, he did it. Lo and behold, as we go and through the work, we get to the point where, at the end of the year, and the other two staff members, through their common planning, we want to do this too next year. So, that's innovation. And, and that's, they're learning from each other. So, to support those opportunities, but make sure that we provide that foundation and that systems understanding so that we don't go way off course and that we're doing that. And then we want to celebrate it. And I think one of the things as an Assistant Superintendent, I don't, as a superintendent, without an Assistant Superintendent, I don't know how you find the time to celebrate it publicly and, and to involve so many people. And I think as an Assistant Superintendent, I would want to do that. Certainly establishing a social media presence in the role of Assistant Superintendent and really working with the community in that manner to share out, particularly when you have students coming from three different communities, coming to, to the middle school and high school, but then connecting the elementary schools in the same manner so that it's not so, so isolated. But to celebrate that and to share that publicly with the community. And at the same time, that establishes some connections. Someone who may own a business in a different community, from an elementary school in West Newbury to Groveland, may realize, oh, I, there's something I can offer there and there's a connection. So, opportunities to do that, too.
So, have you had some experience with that? You mentioned maybe connecting in a media kind of way. Do you have some experience with that? Could you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so using social media in particular and thinking about it from a communications plan and, and helping building leadership all be part of sort of a communications plan. And a communications plan is what we're going to communicate, how frequently we're going to communicate and in what manner, but then communicating to people what they can expect to hear about. So, it's, you, it's a plan for the plan. They have to understand what they can expect to hear about. And giving people the opportunity to choose their platform. But at the same time, using technology from a communication standpoint so that you're not doing separate posts on Twitter feed, on an Instagram page, on a website, and then sending press releases at the same time. You're doing it all under one format and it gets pushed out. We do have, do have some experience doing that. We've been using our website as our main host for that, gets pushed out to a Facebook page, Twitter feed with it. So, there are certainly opportunities to do that. And we've done that. And then we celebrate it beyond that, too. Connecting it regionally, giving kids and teachers the opportunity to, to speak and present. We had two staff members bring a group of LL students to a project-based learning conference in Worcester, this, excuse me, at Regis College, and they presented about a project-based learning opportunity that they did in front of everyone else. So, that's another opportunity to really share that success that may not be social media, but once we do that, then we grab the social media, bring it back and share the fact that they presented publicly with everyone else. So, you have this sort of plan of communication, cycle of communication. And people get entry and access to that, how they use it. Not everyone in all three communities uses Twitter, that's okay. But many might use Facebook. And some don't use social media, they use traditional weekly newspapers, they may check a website, so using those as well, it's all part of the cycle of communication.
Okay. So, would you like to make any closing statement or remarks to the committee?
Oh, I appreciate the opportunity. Again, I think I certainly want to express my gratitude. It's been exciting to, to sort of think about what, what could be in moving ahead. I, you know, I certainly hope you feel my enthusiasm. I think my, I won't do the bio, you've got that, right? But I do think my experience at, at elementary and secondary level in a district that, that, not all that dissimilar from, from Penn Tucket, we have a lot of similarities from student and family population. And I think, I think the work we've done in Melrose would work, would allow me to, to be an asset in the Penn Tucket schools. And yet, at the same time, for me to learn from the work that you've done and continue to build. I, you know, and I see what a great opportunity for myself to take part in sort of the next step in, in having everything come to realization.
Okay. Well, thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Like this way.
These lights, they make me sleepy.
I know.
When I worked and we used to be in conference rooms, it would be a joke because I would talk, like I would be like in the conference room, always asleep. I know. I wanted to do like burpees or something.
My daughter has lava rock bracelets she brought back.
No, no, from the volcano.
No. We saw a lot of lava flow and tubes, caves. Pretty cool.
We're still saving up to go to April.
When is Julie home this year? Saturday. I got Megan home. She's, she's asking. I walked up to her. Megan's my, Julie's my like fun, fun, like Megan's my like serious, but very good caretaker and still fun. If you need babysitting, I'll be there. She's gonna get back. Saturday comes back a week from Sunday. Oh, so the 29th she comes back? On the 38th? Sunday. Oh, right, Sunday. Yeah, 28th is Monday. And one night where they're both gone. So, Megan goes to England with her.
I think it's time for new school for the children.
When does she go? Does she go? She goes on the 28th. So, Megan leaves on the 28th.
It is not.
Okay, because I need a babysitter for her.
For clients.
Oh, the 28th, yeah. But the 29th, yes.
I'm sick of, I'm sick of looking at videos, things on TV going, oh, come on.
This is an allowable expense.
Take a GE boardroom for guys.
Is it reimbursable?
As long as it's reimbursable.
I'm not waiting, I'm not waiting four years.
Why don't they pay babysitters?
I'm not waiting another four minutes, I'm so uncomfortable now.
Yeah, they do.
They helped with the short meetings.
Yeah, this would have come to fruition a long time ago, about budget meetings didn't last 15 minutes, if they were the old ones, it lasted four hours.
And sometimes if they like get last minute cancellations, the people still pay them. I'm like, who will be paying them? He's working, he's that money back or stuff. Well, because they may feel guilty because they like reserve the time to babysit.
A lot of middle school experience with all three candidates.
Michael, how are you?
I'm good. Thanks for coming, appreciate it.
And I think we're all back. We had a little bio break there.
Yeah.
Yep. All right, so this is Andy Murphy, here's our chair, he's gonna.
How you doing, Michael?
How you doing, well, thanks.
I figured that we'd all give you quick introductions about ourselves since you've already given us a, a thorough introduction of yourself. So, I'm actually, I'm the chairman, I am from West Newbury. As you know, we have three different towns on the table. You know, throw it over to Chris Rennig to your left, who I think you've already met, but.
Nice to see you.
From West Newbury and I have three daughters in the system.
Yes, thank you.
Dick Hodgins, retired teacher, assistant principal, principal, and I represent Groveland.
I'm Dina Trotta, I'm from West Newbury and I have one daughter.
Welcome back, I'm Bill Buell, I represent Merrimack and I did not tell from where you went to high school.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm Joanna Blanchard, I'm one of the Merrimack reps.
Greg LeBrack, I'm the business manager.
And that brings us back to me.
So, thanks again for coming in. And as you know, we have about 30 minutes with you and take all the time in that 30 minutes that you'd like to respond, we have three questions. And the first one you know about, it's about a 10-minute presentation to give us your initial thoughts about an entry plan.
Great, okay, me too. I guess in interest of full disclosure, since I did go to Triton, so I am a Viking. Do I have to leave or, or make it interesting? If, if things work out, where would I stand to watch the football game? I better stand, I gotta, right at the 50 yard line. You could do hats, that's true. I took the liberty of just doing a handout. I know I made far too many, but if you wouldn't mind passing them over. Thanks. Great. Well, thank you very much for, for having me. As those are going around, I just wanted to say I'm very grateful for this opportunity and I really appreciate you taking the time to, to speak with me. As you know, I was asked to reflect and think about some target areas that I might focus on in terms of an entry plan. So, I thought the easiest thing to do would be to just draft up what my entry plan might look like were I to be the successful candidate. Of course, understand I'm not presuming at all that I am the, the successful candidate, but it's sort of, there are times where you'll, you'll hear and read where it's, it just sort of sounds like I'm making that assumption. Please know that I'm not. We're all fine. Yeah, good. So, basically what I did was, this is a, a draft entry plan and it's based on the entry plan approach by Barry Jensen, Joanne Watford. If you're familiar with their work, you may be, this is a pretty popular work, but, but if you're not, it's, it's really a, it's, it's really a systematic plan and it's designed to do several things. And so, I just thought I'd highlight the entry plan approach, some of its key features. And while it may seem a bit formal, that is intentional and I think there are some real benefits to, to going about it that way. But some things that it does, first and foremost, I think it encourages the leader who's new to any school system or organization to make sure that you're hitting the ground, listening and learning with others rather than running. It's not about being frantic, it's not about having all the answers or even pretending to know all the answers. You're merely entering into a place where you're just listening and learning. And I think that's an important mantra for anyone new to, to a system. It's an inclusive, systematic and transparent process. Everybody knows what's happening, it's only what they're getting. It's really a framework for a sequence collaborative inquiry about producing trust and mutual understanding of the organization's culture, past and present practice and future opportunities. Really helps to facilitate developing the knowledge of the new leader and allow the leader to get to know the people and the values, past and present practice and, and future opportunities. It also allows the people to get to know the, the new leader as well, which is very important. It's all based on trust and collaboration and mutual relationships. The next one, it, it avoids, avoids the pitfalls of jump reflex problem solving that can come from when you lack an understanding of the context that you're in. And if you think you have to just provide answers, you know the answers, you, you make a lot of mistakes. So, it's really designed to slow things down. It embraces the fact that an entry of any leadership position or anyone new, it's, it's an opportunity for organizational renewal. It embraces the inherent tension between change and continuity and it invites others into dialogue about their plans and dreams and expectations that focus on promise for the future and why we're all here and that's to improve teaching and learning with the success of all students. So, I just thought I'd talk a little bit about why I went about that approach and why I think this is a, some, some key features, I think some real benefits of, of that approach. So, in developing this, this entry plan, I, I went about it with some goals. And first, you know, to get to know people and develop those strong interpersonal connections and relationships that are built on trust. Really wanting to learn some history of the Penn Tucket regional, hear about what's happening now and also getting some more understanding of the direction of where, where you're all headed. I must say it's very exciting in terms of the work that you're doing and the Innovation School and this movement towards providing world-class education for, for students in PRSD. I've really thoroughly enjoyed reading and learning some more about you, so I'm very excited to, to learn more if I get the opportunity. I would like to embrace this idea of promoting the importance of the voice and choice of students, educators and the community through learning more about your Innovation Schools model, setting clear objectives for myself and others during the entry period and developing a deeper understanding of the priority standards and the core course objectives for every course, every content area, so that I may help to lead the curriculum renewal process, which I understand will be going into Phase Two next, next year. As a, just a general guideline, I figured it'd take about the first six, six months of school to include the following components on, to go over on the backside, which would include site visits, to spend a minimum of at least two full days in each school, meet with the principals, observe classes, attend meetings, speak with staff and students of each school, and be sure to visit all 10 Innovation Schools and academies and learn as much as I can from all of those people, all of those programs, schools and academies. The second part of it involves interviews and, and that would be confidential interviews that would be conducted from whenever the position starts through, through December with sample questions that would be refined really in collaboration with the superintendent and other members of the leadership team to really talk about what makes sense. I did draft some questions, but those wouldn't necessarily be the questions that I would use. It would really depend on what folks here thought, whether they are on target or not. And I would work with the superintendent to identify key constituency groups and other staff representatives, teacher representatives, central office staff, innovation leaders, officers from parent-teacher organizations, community members, school committee members and student representatives, and I'm sure there's others in there that I, that I may not have listed that would be important. So, so I drafted some questions just to get a sense of the kind of information that might come out during an entry plan interview. You can see I won't read each and every one to you because you'll have this to take away and I know that, that you can read it. But, you know, there are a few that I think I would touch on and just in terms of themes, you can see it's important to get at the key curricular and instructional issues that PRSD is facing in the next year, five years, why they're important, which issues people feel need the immediate attention of. um, you know, there are a few, um, that I think I would touch on, and just in terms of themes, you can see it's important to get at the key curricular and instructional issues that PRSD, um, is facing in the next year, five years, why they're important, which issues people feel need the immediate attention of, of assistant superintendent, um, which, you know, pieces and parts people have had the largest impact on the instructional program, um, any history on where there may have been some difficulties in making progress, and some key learning that could be made there to help keep things moving smoothly. Um, what leadership you're hoping that I would provide as the assistant superintendent, and what opportunities does this new position present for all of you as school committee members, and also members of the PRSD? Um, you know, it's, it's an opportunity, and so that there's a mutual expectation for something you're gonna get from the team, but also what are you gonna bring to the team? Um, and opening it up to that, you know, how I can best support the superintendent and his leadership of making PRSD the opportunity of choice for students, educators, and the community, is, uh, first and foremost, I, I think it's the assistant superintendent's job to provide support to others so they can be successful, to support successful teaching and learning, and start to with the superintendent, and I believe this, the role of the central office to, to provide support to all of the teachers and the school personnel, and all the personnel in the district, so they can be as effective as possible, so, I would enter it as a, a support role, how can I support the work moving forward? Um, and then any other information that people think that I would need to know in order that I may best serve, uh, the PRSD. So, I would take that information, organize it, analyze it, uh, present that information back, so I collate it all, identify main themes, um, have a period of reflection and feedback, and then develop some action steps for, uh, from reporting that out, and talk about where we are and where we want to go. Um, and, and as, as the entry plan continues to be refined and drafted, I would just ask if this plan touches on issues of greater significance to PRSD, and if so, in which areas, and if not, what would need to, to be refined, and I would go from there, so that, that's just a sample of how I would approach, um, doing a, an entry plan and a draft, the kinds of questions I might ask, but it would be very reflective process, um, and when it would really emerge from the conversations that I had leading into it, so I wouldn't presume it would look exactly like that, but, so those are just some thoughts about, about entry planning.
All right, very good, thanks. So, we have two questions that you haven't prepared for, and what you let, you sort of have, uh, a nice segue into it. So, you asked the question, uh, through your entry plan, you'd be asking, you know, what are you going to be bringing to us as a new addition, a new leader? And so, uh, we provided you with the curriculum, the Penn Tucket curriculum, uh, to review, and we're interested in the questions that you came up with when you reviewed that, so what questions came to your mind when you reviewed the Penn Tucket curriculum? And what would your leadership be supportive of with our curriculum? Uh, how would, so you asked the question, what would you be bringing, so what would you be bringing to us?
Right, okay, great. I think I'd bring a really, um, solid understanding of standards-based education, and how it's a comprehensive cycle with many parts and pieces, um, it's not a linear process at all, um, curriculum development is, is definitely a process, not an event, so it's always ongoing, always happening, and, and you're never done, which some people might find frustrating, there's no, no finish line, you never sprint through the tape, um, you're always going back and looking at how could we make this better, how are we gonna use feedback from assessment results from students and data to talk about, did we get the results we were hoping for, did we get the expected outcomes, what needs to change, how is our instruction gonna change, and all that? So, so that, through that cycle, I, I think I bring, um, a lot of background, a lot of research background, and not only in my, my studies, but in my experience, and just working with teams and helping lead, um, different professional learning community groups and, and content area groups in looking at student work, um, looking at the work that they're doing, looking at results, um, talking about all the components of a standards-based education, um, developing common assessments, both formative and summative, sitting down together with others and looking at those results, um, building really strong norms of collaboration to get highly effective teamwork, um, and high levels of joint collaborative work, um, so that everybody's working together to maximize capacity, to maximize student outcomes, and if we're not getting the outcomes that we need, how can we work together and provide the support to one another to make sure that we're going back and providing intensive interventions, and those tier-two and tier-three level supports and challenges for students who might need more? Um, so, I, I really feel that I've immersed myself in understanding what standard-based education is really about, how, how, how do you identify priority standards, how do those continually serve as a touchstone to keep driving your work? As I looked at, at the curriculum, I was very intrigued and interested in the personal meaning rubric and the adaptive leadership rubric, and, and to speak to your question about what questions I had, I was really wondering if, how comfortable educators were feeling about assessing those areas? Because I, I think they're really important skills in areas of personnel development, but one of the thoughts that I had is I wonder how comfortable the teachers are in really measuring, for lack of a better word, how well some of those students' skills are in those particular areas, and how versed are they in providing instruction and developing those areas, and so I'm, I'm interested in learning more about how teachers go about helping students develop those skills, but also providing meaningful, effective, ongoing feedback in, in those areas, and what that.
So, they're a little bit more comfortable with the adaptive leadership part?
Mm-hmm.
Here in the district, we used to call that habits of learning, and it's sort of evolved, and the, the rubric emerged, and so there are some concrete areas that they're, I think, pretty comfortable with, collaboration, you know, creativity. The part that is probably a little bit more difficult for everybody is to get their head wrapped around the personal meaning component, initially, people think, well, that means that you connect, you know, baseball statistics to math, and that's an in, a hook, you know, it's beyond hooks, it's, it's really about how do you get kids to persist, how do you get them to set goals, how do you get them to overcome an area of, uh, of weakness that they might have, and capitalize on their strengths, so, those are some of the, uh, you know, the next steps that we've got to do, but they're, they're more familiar with the curriculum, a little less familiar and comfortable with the adaptive leadership, and then personal meaning is, is kind of throwing some people, and, you know, not everybody's really on board with all that just yet. So, I think those are good questions, so what other questions come to mind?
Um, if I understood correctly, as you enter phase two, there'll be a real focus on, um, developing the, the assessments and assessing instructional capacity and how well, um, folks are ready, so I'm curious about past experience teachers have had, how, um, comfortable are they in not only developing common formative and summative assessments, but in sitting down together and looking at student work, is that, um, a practice that happens pretty regularly, is it a work in progress?
Yeah, so again, there's a lot of variability across the district, I think there are some teams of teachers that are really great at that, and there are some others that need some work on, so you'd see some variability across the district in, in all of those areas, can they develop common formative assessments, to what degree are they using them, to what degree are they collaborating, you know, how are they using student work to inform their practice, a lot of variability, and that's one of the reasons that this position's gonna be so important to us, you know, to get into those conversations and to really do a good job. So, you, you talked about some good questions and some ideas that you have, so what experience do you have with standards-based instruction, and so how have you actually done that work, you know, prior to coming here?
Sure. Um, I've done a lot of work with teams in content areas, um, really working from, originally from the mass curriculum frameworks, and talking and feeling, you know, at times, um, first looking at it when they first came out, helping people deal with, just feeling overwhelmed, and there's so much, and how do you know what to focus on, and this all seems so important, and what's essential, and so, the first work that, that really doing is, um, helping teams really identify priority standards, what's essential to know, um, what's important to know, and what's nice to know, and, and, and just try to, try to pull out that work, and, and try to take that overwhelming feeling from trying to go a mile wide but only an inch deep, and really give people permission to say, here at Penn Tucket, these are the real essential skills, this is what we really want students to know and be able to do, and if they get some of these other things, these are important, and if we can get to some of these other things, these are nice, but we're really clear, and it's, it's, there's a common agreement about, about what's essential. And then working from that, de- designing assessments that are really, really ensuring that those assessments are designed and are measuring what we intend to measure, not only the intended curriculum, but what actually is, is being delivered, so, um, developing the assessments together, administering them, and then sitting down and working with teams, um, to look at, at results, and like you said, the variability, I, I think I, I have a real strength for helping develop, um, synergy and collaboration among teams. Um, I've, you know, they run the gamut, from people who are very comfortable sitting together and talking very openly about their hopes, dreams, and challenges, and they can do the work, and they're flying, and they have this high level of just really synergistic energy, all the way down to teams who are, um, have only very surface-level friendly conversations, and are very, um, lacking in trust, and not wanting to open up, and so, really just talking with groups about what is it gonna take to, um, help develop a mutual sense of trust, how can we have real strong norms of collaboration, that this is how we talk and behave when we're all in here to improve things for student learning? How are we gonna challenge each other when we're not meeting those norms of collaboration, so that we can get to a point where we're the highest functioning team that we can be, um, and continually going back and revisiting those, those norms of collaboration?
Can you give us an example of maybe a time when you took a team from one step to another, and what you did?
Sure, um, I, I guess I'll, I'll start with, um, we, we had a team that I, I think they would describe themselves as very effective, and I, and I would agree, I think they were doing some great work, um, but they really weren't breaking through and kind of hitting that highest level of, of joint work, and, and the highest levels of collaboration, where they, they were doing some mutual sharing, um, and they were doing some collaboration, but they really weren't hitting a level where they were kind of elevating each other's practice, and really providing key feedback to one another and support and that kind of thing, so, we had some conversations around student work, where we were getting good results, but we had to have some hard conversations, um, in the sense that sometimes good just isn't good enough, and you talk about moving from good to great, uh, in the words of Jim Collins and things, but, um, how could we elevate our practice, and, um, sometimes, you know, we were, we were lulled into a sense of, um, we were a high-performing school in the sense that our scores were good enough, but we had to put that aside to say, we're high-performing, perhaps in terms of this one measure, but how could we be really great, and, and so we spent some time really looking at promoting, going into each other's classrooms, um, getting to a point where we could say, here are my results on this assessment, um, they're not nearly as good as, as Dix, your kid's knocked it out of the park, my kids are really only performing at a mediocre, mediocre level, how did you do that? Can you tell me more about that, can I come watch you do that, those kinds of conversations, so I'd say one example is getting what I would maybe call a level-three team, starting to break through to level-four, just by asking some of those questions.
Okay, great. So, the, the last question is around our innovation schools, and I think it, it's not a secret that innovation schools has really become a part of our identity here in Penn Tucket, and, uh, so what we're wondering about is, how would your leadership support our Penn Tucket innovation schools?
Yeah, I, I think the premise of offering voice and choice is so critical, um, and I think the idea behind innovation schools as they came to be, um, the promotion of, of voice and choice, allowing students those opportunities, um, is very inspiring work, and I think that, um, what I find really exciting about it, and is, it's one example that I'm finding as I'm learning about Penn Tucket, of ways that you all are thinking differently about public education, and it's one area that I find very attractive and very exciting, um, and I think I said this to Dr. Mark Queen earlier, that you've kind of gotten off the hamster wheel about how we do public school, and you're just thinking very differently and innovatively about, um, how do you customize and try to meet the individual needs and interests, and really engage students at, at the highest levels? Um, and the fact that that can be done within the public school model, um, and I think innovation schools is really an avenue to, to be able to do that, um, to really also focus and capture, really capture that, um, the educator's passions for why they entered teaching, and why they, what kinds of things do they want to share with young people, and really making those real-world connections, so, um, so I think something very special is happening here and, and around the innovation schools, um, and the ten that are already in existence, um, you know, I'm really excited to learn much more about, and, and much of that as I can, I, I think my role in, in terms of leadership is how can I remove as many obstacles as possible to allow that kind of innovation to continue, is really how I would see my role, really hearing from people, what do you need to, to sustain this, what do you need to be even more successful, how can I, uh, help in that effort, how can I help with resources, how can I help whether it's financial, or, or curricular, or technology tools, or, or other resources, um, really just understanding what is it that, um, the existing innovation schools are really trying to aspire to, and how I can help do that, and, but also see if there are ways I can continue to help plant seeds for, for more, I'm sure there are other ideas and other passions and interests, and there may be some that we haven't, and some students that we haven't quite engaged yet, and haven't quite, um, ignited their passions, so, um, so to keep promoting that idea of that we're open to exploring, um, other, other avenues and other innovations, and, um, you know, helping evaluate the programs and meet the requirements of the, of the innovation school law, and do the evaluations and all, all that, um, but really help people stay excited about the work, and keep it joyful, um, so that it doesn't get bogged down in, in either red tape or bureaucracy of, of whatever needs to happen in order to, to sustain innovation schools, but just really maintain that spark and, and the joy, um, and that the way I hear people writing and talking about the, the innovation schools and things, that just really how can I sustain that, that would be really important.
So, um, part of what you were talking about, um, you know, how to keep the work joyful, that part, um, innovation school work is a lot of work, and what I see people doing is a lot of work, and they're vulnerable to, uh, collapsing from the amount of work that they're doing in some cases, so, how do you contribute to a healthy morale in an environment where people are working really hard, the work is, is pretty challenging, and we're just sort of turning the corner to see our, our results right now? Uh, so how do you contribute to that, you know, improved morale or that high-quality working environment?
Right, um, I think you're visible, you're fully understanding all of the components and aspects of, of the work, um, celebrating the successes, I think sometimes we get so busy doing the work that we forget to celebrate what's really going well, and, and really offering kudos and accolades to people who are doing that hard work and are really meeting with, with success, and so celebration is a huge part of it, um, being very mindful of checking in, getting feedback, um, asking folks how it's going, really listening to what they have to say, being responsive to what they, they say that they need, um, don't presume that, um, everything's just going fine, or because, um, these folks are hardworking, maybe they make the work look pretty easy, and, and not get lulled into the sense that, oh, they must be fine, they haven't asked for anything, get to them, ask how it may help, how's this going, but observe as well, and, and be present, and participate in, in the model, in the school, and offer to, to be there, and to co-teach, or to observe, or to provide feedback, or, um, to get people out to see other models in other schools and other places, it's good to get your head out of your, your world sometimes, and just freshen it up a little bit, too, so, um, you know, just promote that idea, we're here to help, we're here to support and sustain this really difficult work that you're doing, I really feel it would be my job to serve those people and, and support, and offer that assistance, and just, you know, be visible, celebrate them, remove obstacles, um, provide any, an ongoing support that I could.
Great, so now if you have some closing remarks, we're open to those two?
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, great, um, goes by fast.
It does.
Good, um, yeah, I, you know, I think, I, a few things that I touched on, and one is that, and it's, um, it's really genuine, um, as I'm, have been reading and learning about Penn Tucket, or, and just hearing about the things that are going, going on here, it's very inspiring, and I, and I don't just say that because I'm in an interview setting, um, I find a lot of the work, the values that are driving the work, the goals and the principles, um, the level of structure, the level of organization, the teamwork that I'm hearing and reading about, the support, um, that goes right to the, to the committee level, um, is, is all very positive, very affirming, and something that I find very inviting, so if you had any doubt, or as I walk out, if you're wondering So if you had any doubt or as I walk out, if you're wondering, I wonder if he wants this job or wants to be here, no doubt. Um, there's just some really exciting things that I would honestly love to be a part of if, if that were to, to work out that, that way. So I commend and applaud that work. I think it would be very exciting to be part of this team and be able to make, contribute and serve this district in that way. Um, you know, I think I was really intrigued by one of the school committee goals that you had listed for last year was to talk about how you could maximize or increase the capacity of the central office. And to me, that really spoke to the idea that you're all here wanting to support the work and the leadership. And I, you know, I think leading, leading, um, in any organization, but particularly in education, it's very, very challenging. It can be very lonely. Um, and leaders also need support. And I, in reading your goals and, and some of the school committees, I really get the sense that you're committed to not only the district being successful, but the superintendent and the business manager and, and others who work here, you want them to be successful. And that's a very important vote of confidence that I, I find too. So I also find that appealing and I just wanted to, to mention that. Um, I would probably just end by really thanking you for this opportunity and tell you how grateful I am. Um, I appreciate and applaud your service and serving on a school committee that can be thankless work sometimes with the hours and sometimes some of the difficult things you need to deal with. So, so I thank you for that. Uh, I've really enjoyed spending the last, what has been the last couple of months really just immersing myself in the district and learning as much as I can. And, um, it's, it's been really enjoyable research and reading and thinking. And it's got me kind of rekindled my spirit, my joy and my passion for education. So if nothing else, I, I thank you for that. So.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Good night everyone.
Hi.
I feel like you stand.
Yeah.
I think class, yeah.
Only time my back doesn't hurt is when I'm sitting.
Really?
Yeah. You want to trade backs?
No, I like my back.
I've gone on Craigslist. I'm looking for a used back. I'm having no success.
I think if you type in u- used back and Craigslist on the search engine, you're not going to like what you find.
You're going to have the police calling you.
Oh, the answer just starting to dry. My shirt is still, I could ring the, my shirt out.
Well, then I set the alarm and I walk around the building. It's like, no way. I ready get my car, I drive around and I go back in, I'm like, the door, set the alarm. I was like, I'm not going to walk around the building. This is ridiculous.
Just as I get out of my car to rental down for while I'm walking to the bank. Oh.
They have a drive through the bank, you know?
Yeah.
You take a car there? Is there a parking lot?
No, I had to go to the ATM.
The bank was open.
Yeah, it was, it was open somewhere. I saw it out, didn't it? Um, I, um.
Glad we hired you.
You're a good listener as well, huh?
I'm a long trek from Little Valley every day. I'm not fishing in the winter, all the snow and stuff.
Everything's running smooth as silk. Do you think? Good process. Yeah.
And my questions go deeper depending on the time. Hi, Chris.
Hi.
This is Andy Murphy. He's our chair and he'll do introductions.
Sure.
Right. Um, and I am a rep from West Newbury as well.
Great.
And, uh, we thought we'd just do a quick round through the table so you know who you're sitting here with.
Sure, that'd be great.
And I'll start with Chris, who you already know.
Yeah.
Nice to see you again. Remind you, I'm from West Newbury. Free daughters.
Yep, thank you.
Dick Hodges from Grohlland. I'm a retired teacher, assistant principal and principal.
Great. Nice to meet you, Dick. And I'm Deanna Trotta and I have my daughter and I'm from West Newbury. Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you.
Welcome back.
Hi.
Bill Buell. I interviewed you, several other people, and the rep from Merrimack and a retired teacher.
Yes, nice to see you again.
And I'm Joanna Blanchard. I'm another rep from Merrimack.
My name's Merrimack.
Greg will back the business manager.
Oh, hi.
Miriam Maffa. Rema? Nice to meet you.
And now you know everything you need to know for the quiz we're giving you later.
We have name tags.
Yeah. You can use your notes.
Okay.
So, um, you know that there are three questions tonight. You have about 30 minutes to respond. And the first question is around a 10-minute presentation for your initial thoughts for a target, uh, the target areas of the entry plan.
Sure. Hi, thank you for letting me, uh, come back and meet you all. I'm Chris Kelly and I'm happy to be here. I know you know my resume, so I won't go through that. I did put a draft entry plan together, so I thought it might be helpful to pass that out and go over it.
Yes.
I'm going to need my glasses.
It's okay.
So not knowing exactly the timeframe, knowing that this is, uh, later summer hiring and, and knowing that it's going to take a little bit of time to get sort of everything organized, I'm sort of loose with the timing. Uh, typically an entry plan would be listed in a 30, a 60, a 90, 100, 20-day cycle. Um, and if hired, that would, Jeff and I would work on something like that. Like these would be the guiding principles within the first 30 days, within the first 60 days, within the first 90 days and the first 120 days. And then hopefully by then fully onboarded with a strategic plan that complements the work that Jeff has really done already. Um, so I really wrote this in two parts, an early entry plan and then sort of an entry plan. So I'm just going to go over it with you, um, and then describe some of the pieces of it. So the guiding principles, as I started, knowing that although I have a lot of experience in education, this area, this school district is new to me. And every school district is very different and has their own unique concerns. So I would spend a lot of my early entry and really the whole first year of entry, listening, getting feedback, working with all of you, working with the business manager, other central office folks, Jeff, and of course, our most important stakeholders, our students, our teachers and our parents. And really getting a lot of face time, talking to folks and listening to what are the strengths of, uh, the, the district, school districts that we're dealing with? The towns, the district. Um, and then what are things that although working might work better? And really working together to come up with, as I said, 60, a 90, 120-day plan. Uh, knowing that this is, uh, it seems, at least from my research, a new, uh, job again. Um, it, Jeff and I would have to work on the role of it and although the job description was very complete, certainly that will adjust as the new person comes on board and really discussing how I look as, one of the things that really appealed to me about this position in general is it's a true assistant superintendent position. Um, I love curriculum. I love assessment. It's really, I've spent a lot of my, you know, off time working on things like that, professional development as well. But I really love the fact that this would be Jeff's right hand, that there would be a, uh, really a feel of everything. You know, the budget process, the title work, ADA work, human resources, really working with the business manager, uh, the director of people services, really rounding out that team and saying, okay, what are the things that really need to be addressed and how can I address that? So I would imagine my early entry plan would be to discuss that. What is the exact role? What kind of things do you really need support on and how can I build on frankly, the, the strong things that have been established in the last few years? Then really working with folks to develop what people think of the strengths and challenges of the district. And then, um, looking at that five-year transition plan, which is right now sort of at the end and we're sort of ready for the next phase. Um, and really helping Jeff to, to develop that. What does the next three to five years look for, look like in Pennsyltucket regional? There's been a lot of really strong work done and I love the language that you've used in talking about making personal meaning and adaptive leadership. It's really exciting to me. That's exactly what we should be teaching kids, is how do you adjust when things don't go the way you want them to go? And it sounds like you've done a really good job of teaching kids right from preschool that things aren't always going to go the way you want. And you're not always going to have the answers right in front of you and you're going to have to adapt and learn. And I love the idea that you're working with the innovation concept to really bring learning in a personal, true meaning sense. That it's project-based learning at its whole. Now, that's certainly, uh, complex and there's a lot of work behind that. A lot of how do you know kids have mastered skills? How do you know that we're still covering the core curriculum, which is so important and, and frankly regulated? Um, how do we get those MCAS scores up? You know, look at our achievement gaps and really try to focus on some of that without making that our priority focus. Um, so all of this early entry plan will be assimilating data. How will I do that? Well, I'll set up informal meetings, lots of face-to-face meetings, as well as regular scheduled focus group meetings where our parents can come from knowing that it's a three-town district, having focus groups in different towns, getting a chance, inviting and asking to be invited to PTO meetings and school council meetings and really getting out and getting to know the community. Um, one of the strengths that I think I bring to this position is I've been in positions where I've been dropped into something and had to hit the ground running. Um, if, as you saw in my resume, I was the interim principal of Winchester High School, asked to fill in at the very end of the summer and stepped right into a building project with no days to spare. Uh, had never worked in a high school, had never actually gone to a public high school, stepped in and really spent September figuring things out. And by the end, really could have continued on and stayed as a high school principal, not my own personal, um, path. I was really hoping eventually to step into a central office position. Um, and that brought me to Brookline this year. And I, I'm, um, managing a school of about 900 students, 140 staff members. So your district in some ways resembles some of the work that I've done. So some of the questions that I might ask, just looking at the information and really doing a little bit of homework, is asking people about what their roles are. What would they hope to accomplish either in their work or with their children? What's the difficulty in their work? How could basically we support them in their work? What's working well? What is our core strength? Um, what is working well but could be improved upon? Um, what kind of leadership are you looking for from me? And what would that look like? How would I provide feedback? How should you provide feedback? Because I think that's a key piece. I'm a very reflective practitioner and I need to hear from folks like, how do I know I'm doing a good job? Certainly I'm going to report to Jeff and he reports to all of you, but it's important that all of our stakeholders feel like they have two-way communication. And I think, um, in all of my positions, that has been something that I've worked really hard at. Um, and then what would be my priority in developing an action plan that would help support the strong work that's already been done? So I would do that by planning site visits, spending time with the superintendent, conducting longer interviews, review the pertinent data. I did happen to spend some time with the data, but not knowing the community, it would be helpful to really sit down with some of the data and disaggregate it. I've done a lot of that work, um, and I'm very familiar with it. Looking at some of the curriculum documents that you've already done, some of them have been shared with me, but I'm not really sure where you are in the implementation stage in some of those. And really looking at like, do you have assessments? Have any formative assessments been started? Are we doing, um, substantive assessments? What's the current progress reports look like? Do those need to be updated to, uh, adapt to our new model? And then really looking at staff evaluations and staff documents. Uh, also looking at the human resource department and what kind of work's been done in there. Uh, talking about with mentor work and talking to principals about how I could work harder and better to help support them in onboarding and mentoring, uh, new and, and returning teachers. And then looking at our orientation program, I feel like, um, I'm a huge fan of Ken Blanchard's work. And he talks a lot about really putting the time into new employees. And I think his term is there's no such thing as a failing employee. There's a failing manager. Um, and I'm a huge believer in that, that if we spend the time to really train people and set them up with the right supports, just like we do with the kids. If you don't know something, who do you go to? How do you collaboratively problem solve? We need to do the same thing with staff because we know research-wise nationally, a lot of teachers don't make it past the first couple of years in teaching. We don't want that here. It's not good for our district. It's not good for, um, consistency and frankly, it's not good for the economy. So we need to keep people, we need to train them. We need to work on things. We expect them to come in at a, at a very high functioning level and efficient level. But we want them to work on their own personal mastery, just like those same core values that you've talked about, personal meaning, adaptive leadership, rigorous standards. The staff needs to have the same, um, goals. And I think, looking at the documents, I think you've done a nice job with that. And then I know I don't have much time, so I'll quickly go over phase two, which I think for me would be evolving. Um, it's phase two, the guiding principles would be transparency in the data that I did collect. My goal would be to put together some sort of interactive, um, PowerPoint or something like that, bring that on the road, maybe even videotape it. Have it out for folks to see what was the data we collected, what are the, um, target areas? And then as Jeff and I work with other school administrators to develop our next three to five-year plan. Um, and then working on, continuing working on what does the role really look like? How are we going to get the most out of this position? Um, I'm sure, hopefully Jeff has mentioned to you, I work hard. Um, so I know that the job's a lot of work. I, I'm well aware that we're looking for a lot out of this position. Um, and then really looking at the strong work that's been done on the five-year transition plan and come up with our new five-year action plan or implementation plan, however we're going to call that. And what would that be? Not, it may not be limited to, but it would be, uh, presenting our interview and data collection findings, working on the three to five-year plan with other school administrators, with the community and with Jeff certainly. Uh, and, and offering opportunities for feedback along the way so that we can continue to tweak that document. Um, immersion of the work in the curriculum renewal process, build systems. That's a big piece that I think a lot of school educators, we have to work really hard at. Um, one of the things that I have always said as a school leader is we have to be efficient and effective with what we do. We spend a lot of time as, in schools, um, doing things the way we've sort of done them. But there's a faster, better way that actually works better, but we haven't thought of it yet. Um, I think one of the things that I bring to this role is that I am a systems thinker. I, I'm always thinking, well, how can we do this? Could we do it better? Is there a way to send out a Google form and, you know, do the lunch orders before we get there? Or is there a way to, and I can tell from even just my communications with Jeff that he thinks like that as well. Everything he has sent me has been very well organized. He's sort of thought of all the questions that I might have ahead of time. And I like to think that way too. Doesn't mean I don't, I don't miss them sometimes, but I do my best at really trying to think of how can we, teacher's time is really important. We want to get teachers in the classroom and working with the kids. That's their core, their core responsibility. And statistically, and we know this to be true, it's their most important job, is to be that wonderful, prepared, feeling good, having that energy to do the work and the love for the work. We need to work as a central office to give them all the tools they need to be successful and we can't waste their time. So the more we can think about that and really think about systems way, even with, um, business work. Like, you know, there's way to do, uh, orders and things like that that just make it so much quicker and easier. And I love the Google system. I've, I've done a lot of work with coming up with Google forms and spreadsheets and documents and things to fill in. So that just really teachers don't even have to think about it. It's just right there for them. Um, and certainly note, looking at that, looking at three-tiered instruction and looking for ways that we can build the capacity of our students. Um, then really look at professional development. What does our professional development look like to really support our teachers in, in the next three to five years? And then provide a, a feedback loop so that we're constantly asking for, for support. So it's certainly not, um, a mild plan. There's a lot to it. Uh, I realize that there's a lot at stake here. We don't get, you know, I always feel like as an educator, and this will be my 30th year in our field. And I feel like for every year, those are those kids, pre-K to 12, we don't get a do-over for that year, right? We have to bring our A game every day. We have to come with open hearts and really a clear vision for what we want to do. Doesn't mean we won't make mistakes, but we owe it to them to do that. And I think I'm excited about working in a district that has that same philosophy.
Okay.
All right.
Not bad.
Did my best, Jeff.
We were going to ask you more questions, but we're out of time. So we have two more questions for you.
Okay.
And you've already touched upon, uh, both of them a little bit. Uh, so the first one is, what questions come to mind when you reviewed the curriculum, the Pennsyltucket curriculum, uh, document that I sent to you? So there was a lot there. So what questions come to mind? And how would your leadership support next steps in the implementation?
So you did send me, uh, a lot of the curriculum documents, which I appreciate. Thank you. And, um, I digested as much as I could. Um, I know a lot of it has been realigned to the state standards.
Yeah.
But I don't really know what that looks like. What does that look like here? You know, knowing that we have these innovation schools, knowing that we're really building on this project-based learning, what does that look like in real time? So for instance, we want second graders to learn how to research a country. And we want them to have personal meaning and we want them to have project-based learning. What does that look like for a second grade teacher, right? So I want to be able to get into classrooms and meet with teachers and talk with them and say, okay, what does that look like? Yeah, okay, they can pick a country of origin and they can research. Yeah, okay, they can pick a country of origin and they can research it and you've gone through the components of a nonfiction book and they're writing their own. But then how do you assess that they have the mastery skills that we, you know, those targets, so that have-to-know, nice-to-know, you know, would love to know? We really owe it to all students to at least get to the have-to and the nice-to. So I've always been an educator that's just not like, this is the state's mandates. I really want that second circle, which is the have-to, and then that outer circle of imagine the possibilities. But it's in real time, having been a middle school and an elementary teacher, that's really hard when you're teaching every subject every day and then you're trying to infuse technology and now we've got anti-bullying and we're looking at second step and, you know, how do you manage all of that? That's where I come in. And I can say, all right, this is great and this unit, like, what would help you? And they could say, well gee, we don't really have a rubric to assess. Maybe they do, maybe they don't. Those are the questions that I don't have yet. And really, that's the entry plan's intent, is to go around and talk to teachers, like, where are you with some of these things? We have some really good ideas with the curriculum and really looking at like, personal meaning and adaptive leadership and looking at all of those. What are our purpose? Why do we want kids to learn? How do we know when they've learned it? But what does that look like in real time? And that's everything from preschool, starting to recognize print and how books work, to looking all the way. So I'd like to take a look at, what are the formative assessments? What are the summative assessments? I know from my early interview that you do some benchmarking with the Fountas and Penel. What do we then do with kids that haven't quite met the benchmark? Because we know we have them. Not every second grader is reading on grade level. Research tells us that the earlier we can get intervention and get that tier-two and tier-three support if necessary, that they're going to be much, much better prepared for that phenomenal six different programs in middle school and high school. We want to get them there so that they can really make the most of those experiences. I mean, I read them, I was like, where were these when I was in school? I'm excited by it. I can't imagine that our sixth, I mean, our seventh through 12th graders aren't. And they could say, not only do I get to learn about physics, but then I get to learn about, what does that mean? Why study physics? I remember being an algebra student and not quite understanding why I was studying algebra. What's, one of the things that I think Kentucky has a lot of reason to be proud of, is that our kids are really being trained to learn, like, why is this important? What does this look like in the real world? Physics, that's how you design things. And, you know, you want to be in one of those bungee jumper things, like, that's physics. You want to have like anti-crash development in a car, that's physics. And that starts in third grade where we can start building, you know, protections. But again, as a teacher, that's an overwhelming task, especially with the elementary teachers who are teaching every subject beyond just one content. So I think my time would really be used to talk to them. I think those are areas that when I read through it, I sort of, I kept thinking to myself, what does this look like? This is great and I love the way it's outlined. If I'm a teacher, what does this look like? So my hope would be that I would spend some time with Jeff really coming up with documents for teachers of like, what does this look like, right? So this is your personal meaning. Here are some examples. There were a few great examples and I watched the video on the innovation schools, there's some really great examples. But it would be great as parents even, K to, pre-K to 14 of like, what does this look like? So first grade, what does that mean, personal meaning? If I'm a non-educator, I'm like, what does that mean? But I am also a parent, which is great. I have three children, 16 to 25, I've been through this. So I'm like, I think like a parent, like, what does that mean? Okay, that's great that they're going to be researching turtles and their immigration. But like, what does that mean and why is that important? Well, adaptations and life cycle is important no matter what you study. It doesn't really matter what animal you pick. You're learning how to learn about that particular topic. And yeah, there are mastery skills. You have to know where they live, what they eat, who their predators are, but that's not unique to that life cycle. That's part of every life cycle. But I think really explaining that to families and saying, that's why it's important. So I'm excited about that. I think that sounds like a good place to start and we're really spending time to look at the documents that already exist that I probably didn't see.
Yeah, okay, great. So you mentioned the innovation schools a couple of times? And that's really become a part of our identity here in Kentucky. So we're wondering about how your leadership would contribute to the advancement of our innovation schools.
So obviously, I haven't worked at an innovation school before. To be quite honest, when I applied for this job, I had to research what an innovation school was. I knew it was something like a charter school or a horseman school, but I wasn't exactly sure of the different, exact fingers of it. When I started researching it, even before I applied, I was like, holy moly, this is what I've been trying to do in public schools for the last 11 years as a principal. I have creative makerspace or creative technology centers in every school or worked to create them. So I'll explain a little bit what that looked like. So when I was an elementary, preschool through fifth grade elementary school principal in Winchester, we did a lot of really great skills and our scores really improved. We went from a needs improvement, no child left behind, failing school to a level-one school in three years, through a lot of hard work and our staff worked collaboratively to really figure out our areas of concern. So when I say I know the data, I know the data. And we came up with, it was really pretty clear what we had to do and a lot of it had to do with working more closely together and having collaborative time. But another big piece of it was having ways for kids to tinker, that it wasn't just about worksheets and this is how you write a five paragraph essay and here's the hamburger, you know, and your introduction sentence and three great sentences and five adjectives and there's no formula. That doesn't sound like real writing. And our kids showed it. You know, our kids who were great writers wrote well, but our kids who really needed more, they didn't have more. And we had great teachers in that school in Winchester and they were really full of energy. And they were ready for something different. So we worked with the Parents Association to actually build a makerspace that had really the lowbrow makerspace stuff, the paper towel holders, the tapes, all of the different things, and really gave it them sort of the license to say, okay, you're built, you know, say you're doing fifth grade research reports about presidents. Okay, why do they have to write a report on that? Why can't they act it out? Or, we also did a great job there of, we ended up filming things and we bought really good editing equipment, a green screen, we hired a technology person who had a film background and we created our own things, some of which were low-end, like, we found out that some of our kindergartners, the parents weren't reading to them at night. You know, we're all busy, we're working parents. So we videotaped teachers, principals, nurses, vice principals, reading aloud stories. And we sent home several a month and said, no time to read tonight? Put this on and your principal can read your bedtime story. And we adapted that. So, I mean, there are lots of innovative ways to do things to really help improve things. Now in Brookline, we just started the process of setting up a makerspace and really building an area and the time to say to teachers, you know what, yes, you can do it the way you've done it, but why not do it in a different way? Or provide what you've done it and then provide other options. So yes, you can write a report or you can do a Prezi or you can do a PowerPoint or you can videotape, but you could also build something that shows what you're doing. And it doesn't have to be a diorama or a poster board, it could really be a structure. It could be anything. But again, I have that, I'm a huge field of dreams fan. If you build it, they will come. You have to have the space, you have to have the materials and you have to give teachers really the license to do it, because it is scary. I've been, I was a teacher for 18 years. It's really scary to be like, I'm not going to use this program that I've always used and now I'm going to have them build, you know, a real-life caterpillar. Like, that's scary. Like, how will I know that they know what they know, right? How will I know if they don't know what they know? And that's where we come in, where we can say, okay, yeah, but here's the same rubric. This is the project-based rubric. This is the report-based rubric. This is the, you know, narrative-based rubric. And I'm excited about that. As far as at the middle school and high school, I just love the idea of blending things. In my one year as high school principal, I, some of my favorite visits to classrooms were the multiple-themed classrooms. We didn't have a lot of them at Winchester High, but the ones that we did. We also worked with our education foundation, that year that I was there to christen CTC, which was a JEST computer technology center, creative technology center. We had a plotter and we had 3D printer and we did, we put in audio booth and editing and things like that. One of the things that was exciting is that we were able to publish our own materials. So for instance, if I wanted to publish this, I would work with the team of putting lovely clip art, this symbol here would be on a plotter, we would make vinyl displays of it. Every school, every classroom in the district should have one of these. And that's the kind of work that I've started and I've worked on that I know you already have, so, or have started it. So I'm excited about that. I really like the idea the kids get to learn while they're doing and they may not choose, you know, some of these kids are seventh grade, they're 11, 12 years old. They may not go into public service, but they're sure as heck going to know how to work with people. They're going to know how to present. My son is going to be a junior at Redding High School and his favorite project he did this year was in a banking class, where he did a presentation on a new style of banking and he made a 3D banking card that would change the banking industry. And they got to present it to the CEO of the bank. Like, that was, and I mean, this is a kid who's a student and yeah, he did, you know, this course and that course, but that really had meaning for him. And that's the kind of thing that we just have to capitalize on. He talked about that every night and if you know 16-year-olds, having 16-year-olds discuss the exciting education and things that they're doing, at least in my house, it's not always a definite. So when that happens, you really grab onto it. You're like, ooh, okay, yeah, tell me more. I'm excited about that. I don't know much except what I saw in the video and what I read in the documents that you provided, but I'm really excited. But again, those content areas, teachers, I'm sure they are looking for some guidance in that. Like, okay, this is great, you know, we have a dystopian literature course, which is awesome. Who doesn't love that? I'm a huge fan. I was an English major. But like, what does that look like? Are they writing their own dystopian novels? And if so, can we help them on coming up with some rubrics and some guides so that as they give critiques to kids, kids aren't like, well, why are you saying that? Like, no, 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 these are their expectations. This is the minimum, this is sort of what we expect, our benchmark, but then we want you to not stop there. We want to break through the ceiling.
Right. So do you have any closing remarks for us?
So obviously, in the last few weeks, I've spent a lot of time researching your district.
About dystopian literature.
Yeah. I, I'm excited about this. I know you have three great candidates, so I'm sure it's going to be a hard decision, but I think I'd be a perfect fit. I know I have the work ethic. I think I have the background. I haven't been an assistant superintendent before, but I learn fast and I think one of my best features is that I'm not afraid to ask and be like, okay, I haven't, I don't know exactly what this is. I think even with Jeff, a couple of things that he sent me, I said, I called him right away and said, I need some clarification on this. I'm not afraid to ask questions. I'm not going to just plunge forward and be like, five steps in and then be like, ooh, I didn't know. So I think it's a good fit. I know you have your decision to make and based on the feedback that you folks give, I hope this isn't our last meeting, but I really like your, if it is, I'm extremely proud to be part of this process. I'm really proud of the work you've done here. You know, if I ever do become a superintendent, I am sure as heck going to remember this experience. I mean, assistant superintendent. I sure as heck am going to remember this experience. I just, I think some of the work that you do here is really exciting and out of the box and it's really what I've been yearning for my whole career, so.
All right.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I brought extra copies. Do you want these?
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you. The rain stopped, so I don't have to drive home. Yeah, in the rain. Thanks again.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Walk the front door before you get that hard. Wait for Jeff to get back, right?
No.
No?
For what?
Twitter.
Oh.
It's why I'm at here.
I know, are we not allowed to talk?
I know. I've already written my email here.
Okay. I think I have too. Everybody knows the finance meeting next Tuesday is at 6:00 and the business meeting is at 6:30. Is there anybody that won't be coming?
Lisa will be coming. I'm just happy to talk to her.
We do finance at 6:15, so it won't take us more than 15 minutes, I'm thinking.
I can certainly mention that.
I think Greg said this summer we could do it, because he probably would be quick.
Or just stop and do it at 6:15? Okay, let me.
I don't mind if a few minutes are left. Can check with Greg. Greg, can we do finance at 6:15?
I think I've already posted it for 6:30, but it doesn't matter.
What would I? Do you have a warrant next week?
You told me we did.
I'm going to check whether, the problem with doing it next week, as we figured out, is I would miss the discount date for the electric companies. So I'm going to see if I can run a quick one on the 28th, or any payroll one, if you did that tonight. So it might be a real quick warrant, I'll see if you can run one, then I can do one.
Sweet, then we don't meet in our.
Laws will be in the 15th, because even then, I'd have to send the electric bills out ahead of time, have to hand deliver it before you guys sign, so if you're okay with that.
I'm fine with that. You'll send an email. So the 7/28 could just be stop in the office.
Well, no, well, no, if you have a business meeting, we'll do it that night.
We're not having a business meeting on the 28th.
Well, maybe I won't do anything until August 1st.
All right, we'll talk about it. I don't know if everybody else.
There's not a lot of.
So 6:30?
We did so much the first.
It's a business meeting.
Yes, for the business meeting.
Not a lot of the bills have been early ordering yet, so they may not, you can press right now, so you've only got like four checks. So there's not a lot right now, so.
So just to reiterate, we all need to get our feedback and Jeff, you want to give a deadline? Yeah, if by like 5:00 on Thursday, sometime on Thursday would be the deadline. And what I told each candidate is that my expectation is by Thursday, you would all[1707.08]